Okay, I'd like to call this the need to order and all may rise with what they need. So we're gonna get started. Be resolved at the Board of Education appoint Deborah Pottenberg as district clerk pro temp for the July 9th, 2024 organizational meeting of the Board of Education. I have a motion.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And at this time, I'd like to give the, I'm going to administer the oath of office to the newly elected board members, Nikki Mundy and Linda Colette. And then I will also, this is going to be our new student representative Sasha Lyneley, and I will give her a look first as well. I do solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of the Board of Education.
Of the Office of the Board of Education.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thanks. I do solemnly swear. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of New York, and the Constitution of the State of New York. Yep, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of the Board of Education, of the Office of the Board of Education according to the best of my ability. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
I'll faithfully discharge the duties as student representative.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Can I have a motion to approve the present agenda after?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, R1, be resolved that the Board of Education appoint Deborah Pottenberg as district clerk for the Child Central School in Pittsburgh for the 2024-2025 this year at a stipend of 4,300 per year. For the motion.
Motion.
Second. Call in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? At this time, the interim superintendent will introduce the oath today.
Hey, after me, I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of.
And that I faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of. The District Clerk. Okay, at this time, I'm going to ask for statements from any board members seeking nominations for a board officer's position. Would like to begin.
I would like to state, I want to make a statement of intention to leave the board present for the next week. I believe that you need to.
You can, if you'd like, you can.
I just, with the new members and with all of the news, I feel that my time as a vice president, Fred was able to even give me enough that I can discharge this office. And I have a great team here, and I feel that anything that I might do lacking in my knowledge of education and other, that there's a wealth of knowledge here. I believe that this board can be as successful as last year.
Anyone else?
Oh, no.
Nope. Oh, you can, so.
Nope, it's vice.
Yes.
She can't.
Yes.
Oh, I thought.
I'm sure general officers.
Okay, it doesn't have any sense.
But I would like to nominate myself to run for vice president, mostly just for, you know, we can work well together and. Need a regular and.
Okay, so then I'm going to need a motion.
Motion.
To nominate Mary Ann. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now I will give, I will administer the oath of office to. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Office of President of the Board of Education.
The Office of President of the Board of Education.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Okay, so from here on in, the newly elected president will take over the meeting.
Okay. The next on the agenda is the election of the Vice President of the Board of Education. Any nominations for the Office of Vice President of the Board of Education?
I nominate John Griffin.
A second now?
John Griffin.
Don.
Don, don. I thought you said John. I did say Don. I said Don. It's just, she's a little rattled. Yeah. Okay. Okay, do I have a motion?
Motion.
We had Ariel and then Fred, now we need all in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Any opposed?
Okay.
You're just.
Yep, yeah, I'm going to.
I just could've sworn you sent you. I was like so thrown.
As he walks in the.
Yeah. It's thrown. Yeah, it is.
Okay, I do solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Vice President.
Of the Office of Vice President.
Of the Board of Education.
Board of Education.
According to the best of my ability.
Okay, so now we're into old business, which, this is my old business policy, of course. We're getting our policy second reading. So we had our first reading. Last board meeting, the second reading. Is there any discussion? Do you guys have any questions in policy?
I have a comment.
Okay.
But I don't think it's going to merit any change right now.
Okay.
The student use of personal technology policy, 7316. It's really specific. Unfortunately, I think it's too specific, and I foresee some conflict in the coming years.
Okay.
And there's no definition of what devices might be admissible in the school or in classroom use, like as an example. It's not popular in our school, but in some schools, children choose to bring their own devices to class. That is a potential issue we need to consider, and I don't have an opinion on it, other than it's, I think it's likely to become a conflict space, particularly as we, we secure these devices and we control them more. We end up with uncontrolled and controlled devices, devices that work with the academic software and devices that don't. And a second unrelated issue is, I think it's ignored in all of our policies, and it's largely ignored at the administrative level, the reality that our students are using these school devices for personal use at home pretty consistently. And we haven't ever really tackled, what are the, what are the privacy implications there, what are the legal implications? And I think it's, there's likely to be legislation here, and I'd like our school to have an opinion on this before.
Can I maybe took that, asked that Mike walk us through some of what we have in place at this point? And maybe some ideas if he.
Maybe, I think what I'm asking right now is I want the district to think about this space.
Okay.
And come back to us with an opinion of how this policy can be updated to address those two issues. And so that might be, this might be a multi-year project.
Okay.
But I think we need to, we're updating the policy now, and probably this should have been something that we started on a few years ago, and other than that, these are all great, and thank you very much, Mary Ann. I did notice one potential issue here in the public content text section down at the bottom, 4321 is down twice, and I oh, it's 43216 and 432111, okay. So.
No problem there?
Yes, NISBA has a way of, those were two brand-new policies that we did not have that are required by the state. We decided that since we are eventually going to the NISBA numbering system to try to rearrange our numbers to fit the brand-new policies when in the next month or so, they're all going to be number. So we just went with what, how they had it.
So they're going to get the numbering fixed.
Right, and they, they have the system where if it's a policy that has the same content area, and they just do like a dot one, dot two. If they're kind of subsections of a policy, and that's just the way they, they do some of the numbering on the bigger issues. You'll, you'll notice that with a lot of the health services policies, specialized patient policies, the same thing.
If I might, just for a moment. And we did that, go ahead and redevelop or change or whatever we're going to do, I'd like very much, or I think maybe I like the board would, but like very much to have students have some survey or some input into their use of devices and what they think is going to serve their needs best to students without violating any kind of a other kind of policy. Yeah, I think that might be a good idea.
Okay. That's, that's an excellent observation, and I think if this next round of policy committee, we can drill down into more detail. We just getting through this audit, getting everything into compliance, and now we can start looking at the minutia of things, and we'll have more time to spend to like make it more channel-specific. So that'll be this policy committee's one of their tasks this time. Thank you. So do I, I have a motion to adopt the policies.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Anybody in line to you? Just see.
Four.
Is there anybody?
Okay, so we're on to the organizational meeting consensus agenda. Be it resolved that the Board of Education accept the organizational meeting consensus agenda I through K as written. Can I have a motion?
Motion. That is all.
Second.
Any questions?
I have a comment for our new board members. There's an awful lot of, first of all, there's an awful lot in this section because it's the first meeting of the year. A lot of our agreements end with the school year and then be renewed with the new school year, so that's why this is super heavy. But it's really important then, if you spend any time reviewing agenda, to be informed that you pay close attention to this consensus business agenda. Because sometimes there's problems there. They're very infrequent, but that's why we need the extra eyes. But also, there's a lot that we don't discuss that happens unless you ask a question about what, what happens in consensus agenda. So that's it.
Thank you, Matt, that was, that was important. That's true, there is a lot. And it's not always the same.
So I, I would even go start to say, maybe we should stop for a moment and like make sure that our, our new board members are, do you guys look at these? Do you have any questions about any of these?
The kids' club is clear now, is there to go?
That's correct, as of now, they're not there to go. There's a couple contracts that we will be putting out on the August meeting that they weren't, we were not even going to get in time. Still working on with Columbia Memorial and our doctors, and they're a big one, so I reached out today and they, they're still waiting, so. But there'd be probably 95, 90s or something contracts that we got for, you know, a year earlier, yeah, review and put on boards.
Anybody else have any questions? Hey.
Hey, all in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Any opposed? All scrolling.
Now you go all the way down to pause. Code of Ethics now.
Here we are. I need a motion to continue the Board of Education policies in code of ethics.
Motion.
Oh, here it is. Be resolved that policies and the code of ethics of the Board of Education continue in force for the current fiscal year unless duly modified. I have a motion.
Motion.
Second. Any questions?
Yes, I would wonder, I've been looking through my new board handbook, but the code of ethics, does that law governs us or?
That's the school policies and code of ethics, I believe, not the board and what, which is this. So we're, we're on L1, which is our existing, or the full policy manual that, that the board is a piece of, but it's all the policies.
Okay, so the court, the code of ethics, I can find that, or I haven't yet, but can anyone explain it a little bit more to?
Are we referring to the, the, the student handbook, is that what that is?
It's, I think it's the faculty governing handbook, and it covers, it's not, it's not terrible, I'm going to look for it online and send it to you, but it's not terribly different, you got it?
I don't know what number it is.
It's not terribly different than any other code of ethics that you'd see in schools, you know, the do's and don'ts for being responsible for children. And the public funds.
Like mandated reporting.
That's all, yeah, that's all in there, yeah.
Okay, I do understand, I'm reserving my question on board norms of how we do things, but I can reserve that, that's, I just wanted to make sure I was in the right place. Thank you so much.
I can send you, I can send you forward.
Did you find it, Tim?
I didn't find it, but I, I think.
Okay, so can I, so we did the motion, so any other questions? Motion, in a second.
Questions?
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 And now this is the motion to adopt annual board handbook. Be it resolved that the Board of Education adopt the board handbook unless duly modified. I have a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Any questions?
A couple comments. One is, and I don't think that this is a reason not to adopt, but we might want to readapt at some point. There's some references in here to very specific policy numbers, so whenever that policy renumbering happens, we need to update this. The, the second thing is, there's a reference to the Wellness Committee, which I believe was chartered for a very specific amount of time, and that's now been, been elapsed, so that committee no longer exists. We could have a discussion about that, but it's not currently.
So there were discussions, there were discussions about whether or not we wanted to expand committees, board committees, or to involve more community members. And so we didn't change, we didn't change it in the case, because then we just have to go backwards. Back into that, and then as far as the policies, absolutely right, until we get the numbers all completed, we're adopting policy tonight, so not passing the board handbook and move that one down.
Yeah.
Just unfortunate.
Yeah, and there, there may be a district committee on wellness or something similar to that, but there used to be a board committee on wellness, and that one is no longer chartered, it's expired.
Okay.
So it should get removed from here. But again, we could just do that when we're adopting, then renumber. The only other thing in here is, I just want to relate my experience of being a new board member, which was, this handbook was brand-new when I was a new board member, it was like maybe a draft. It was like, they had worked on it really hard, and it was like being implemented right as I joined. It felt really, it was a lot, first of all, there's a lot in there. Some of the things I questioned, why are they in there, why is it, why do we need this, why isn't state law enough? The longer I've been on the board, the more I've come to appreciate some of the nuances that are in here that have, over the years, almost, almost entirely, top to bottom, have consistently proven to be the right policies we. So, you know, when I first started, I was thinking, I'm not sure how I feel about all of these, but having been here for almost eight years or about eight years, I'm feeling really good about the current handbook. So I have no requests for it, and I would go as far as to say, I would, I would defend pretty strongly, pretty much everything that's in here. That's it, I haven't talked about the board handbook in years, but.
Man, I can comment about T?
Please.
So we, we will be looking at the, the board retreat, so that we can, because we have two new members, and that, that's a significant number of members in a separate group, so we will be looking at a board retreat, it is based on this document entirely. And maybe some conversations that come out during that, I'm not sure, but, but this document is going to be the driver for.
And during that board retreat, we can be discussing whether we want to renew the charter of Wellness Committee. So I do foresee readapting this as we get further in. It's a great starting point for us to have the conversation and see where, because there's a lot of change coming. And like you, Matt, same thing, when I first read it, it was a lot of information, it was a little bit of, I don't understand it, but as you go through board service, you go back to that, and like, okay, yeah, so I had the exact same experience. So yeah, I, I perceive readapting it, we may add a couple things to me, but mostly it's, it's a solid document. I appreciate that. So, anybody else have any other questions?
Just thank you to both of you for comments.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, certification of standard workday. Be it resolved that the Board of Education establish the following standard workday for Cadham Central School District employees whose titles are reported to employees retirement system as required by the New York State and local retirement system effective July 1st, 2015. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now we're at the public comments section. This is a open public comment. The purpose of this public comment period is to allow the Board of Education to hear as a whole, any comments that may arise after Board of Education discussions at this meeting are related to any school matter. During this public comment period, the Board of Education will hear comments from students, parents, employees, district residents, and district property and business owners for a period of time not to exceed 20 minutes in total, division three minutes per speaker. There anyone here who would like to speak?
Or anybody who would like to speak?
Any hands on the.
Four on nine, no hands.
Should give them another second case. Nope, nobody's, they would have hit the button.
Minutes usually not.
Okay, okay, then we'll move on to board member comment. I'll let the board members make their comments first.
I am super, I, I am super happy about how our superintendent selection process went. So thank you to Andrew and your family for being here. And I sort of popped a bubble, bubble on the next agenda item, but I could not say that. I'm also super excited, just see, we got a bunch of roofing material up there, and a big chunk of the roof's already done, so.
Yeah.
That is also really exciting.
Yeah.
Very good.
Our graduation. Graduation was wonderful, the parade was wonderful, and we're still patting everybody in the back in the high school, 100% of our kids graduated this year. Just, we're so proud of that, that was a wonderful night.
I stopped in on Friday just to check in with Miles and Mr. Chuddy. Because, you know, they were kind of both finishing up that first week of job responsibilities, just wanted to see how they were doing. I, I was pleased to see, you know, Mike seems to, he knows what he's doing, and he's been here a while, so he knows us too. But Miles was digging in with information, Justin was in there, Mr. Forrest was in there, working with him. The secretaries were all really supportive, it seemed like a really hot, like the environment of that office already seems very positive, so I'm excited about that, too.
If I could, I would just also like to say that a thank you goes to our retired, retiring high school principal, Mr. Thorson. He will be, I will be on board until the first part of August, when he officially retires, and so it's really great that he can be here along with Mr. Forrest to talk to Miles, I can name his last name.
Yeah.
And it's, it's really good thing, because Justin and John did bring this graduation home, and they did a really good job. And so in future, it'll be different people, person or people, but I just would like to commend them.
Okay. So before the meeting, we tried to figure out our dates for our board retreat. We have almost 100% consensus, but unfortunately, Ender cannot attend the one day that we're all. But, so, we would love to have you there, but vacations and family are extremely important. This might not be the most important time for you to be there, I think, as much, we would love to have you there. But if, if you can't, you're not changing vacation, we won't let you do that.
I don't think my wife would.
No, it's precious, and you need it. So. Maybe should we have a discussion about whether we'll just proceed?
I, I have a thought.
Please.
So the, the workshop focus, I believe, is going to be on um, internal board operations. Um, we have a follow-up board responsibility that we also need to speak together on, that actually we do need Andrew for.
Okay.
Um, and I don't know if like, a special meeting is the right way to do it, or we just try to keep a really light agenda one night and bite it off. In a normal meeting, um, but. We should probably look at our um, our district goals again. Uh, but I'm wondering if that should happen um, closer to the middle of the school year and not before the school year.
I don't know. I mean. And Andrew, on, on this um, regular protocol on addressing the audience, uh. I don't know that, I don't think the board goals are, are, are short conversation. I don't think we can do that short. Uh, it, it took us a year to get those done.
I'm, I'm not even sure I want to get them done in a meeting, but what I want to do is talk about them.
Okay.
In a open, like, workshop-y type format with our new superintendent.
Yeah, I absolutely agree with that part. How are your, so, I mean. But I would, I would defer to Andrew on his thoughts on, um, where, where, when you want to discuss board goals. And, and not necessarily. Couple them with a board retreat, uh, simply because I think the board retreat should probably be done over the summer.
Year, we met twice. We had a retreat in the meeting.
Yeah.
We, we've done this twice. We had a retreat one year, and then we found we needed another meeting, so that's another option.
So, in my experience, um, the board goals, I believe, are one of the most important parts of what we do. Um, and how, how I have typically done it. Created your goals as a board, and then I take them from there with all the administrators, and that's our action plan of the year. So um, I, I think investing as much time as we need in those goals, you know, I, I, I looked at what you had currently in your goals and. They're, they're fantastic, um, but if, you know, depending upon how deep you want to go into them. Um, we can weave deeper and further. Um, in, in my current district that I'm in, we um, spent a lot of time on the goals, you know, several meetings. Kind of fine tuning them, uh, because you need a consensus to do that.
So we did a historic, it took us like a year. We had two workshops, three workshops. On board goals, um, to come up with ones that we adopted. Um, that being said, I think that there's an articulation process at superintendent level with your administrative team. That should be happening. Do you think that that needs to occur before the beginning of the year, or can we get into the year? This is not here.
Yeah, sure. It's always good to ha- I, I like to have our goals ready in the summer, so we can start in September.
It's a starting place.
Yeah.
Because what I typically do is I, this is, and we could talk more about how, what the history is, so we take the board goals. Then we come up with action plans. Every administrator comes up with action plans and how they're going to work towards them. And then we get an update regularly on how we're making those come to fruition. Now, the goals that we put together, uh, we've had the same goals for three years, because it takes many of the goals, it takes many years. To accomplish, and we tweak them every year. Um, so it's ideal to have them during the summer, but this is, I'm not actually starting until, until September, so it's kind of a unique year. Um, so I certainly could see, you know, I, my goal would be for next year to have them established and ready to go for the summer. But I think the process is going to take longer just because of the time. So, I, I think, in recognition of that. I'd like to have the first conversation about next year's goals, not this year's goals, before finance season starts. Because then things get really busy, and then, and then the board year's over.
Can't decide, you know, if your board goes, you're not doing a, a, a rough estimate of the number to it, your budget's not going to work, so.
That may be too, um, and, and, but. Yeah. Debbie, I was looking at the schedule, and wasn't there a day specifically September twentieth or something that said board goals? Working on board goals at that meeting? We, from last year, that's possible. I, I feel like I saw that somewhere, September twentieth, I saw. It wasn't like a recurring thing, it's just the way it worked out. Because I was thinking that would be good timing to start that conversation, because hopefully I'll have started at that point.
That was, uh, you were looking, so last year, we did, did our board goals, uh, we, our first. Our first meeting on board goals was September twentieth last year.
I saw that earlier, when I said that was twenty-three, okay. But around that time might be a good time to start, because I'll have started at that.
Okay, so, here's a thought. Can we keep our August seventh date? That the board here will have, will touch on strategic plan. We'll touch on, um, we'll go through the handbook, we'll, we'll get started with board goals, and then plan on having a second meeting. With Andrew, but I think for us to just get a lot of this. Talked about and, and, and just, just get an idea of where we're at, where we're going, especially, you know, being a novice myself. I could really use this opportunity to work with our board. And learn things, and then work on goals, strategic planning, um, as a secondary meeting. Is that? Anybody have any thoughts on that idea?
I have, uh, two thoughts. One is, um, one is. Encompassing board goals, and the other one is personal. Um, in the first instance, I, I agree that the goals are wonderful. But we have a goal of all students reading on or above grade level. And we know from looking at our statistics and looking at our student achievement, that is a lofty goal for any school district. But it doesn't mean that we should not pursue. Um, the other thing I wanted to say, and it is personal, and I'm going to use my sense of humor here, is um. Fred, in a, a very explicit email that you sent me, um, one of several, uh, you told me that, uh, at the board retreat. It would be, um, that would be an appropriate time for me to say something, like a meet and greet. You know, and for me, I only need about fifteen minutes of the three hours, and I don't know how much time Nikki would need. But we're not going to be able to get to everything we have to do, so, uh, that's my confusion, is that. You sent me the email telling me that I couldn't speak at another time. I'm going to finish, okay?
Yeah.
Uh, I couldn't speak at another time, uh, but now I'm confused, because what, what Mary Ann is saying makes sense to me. But in light of what you told me as board president of a few hours ago, or that, you know, that came to me in the last. Week or so, uh, can, can Mary Ann or. Or Dawn, can you explain to me?
Just to clarify some, some things that I did, not misrepresented, but maybe misunderstood or something. You initially asked for an executive session time?
That isn't exactly what I said.
I'm sure I have the email, but.
Argue this.
Well, Linda, if you're going to quote me in an email. I think it's only fair that I respond with the email that, that initiated it, right? So, I, I can find it, yeah.
You would find the last.
Well, I think that, finally, the last email is only a summary of a statement, but you asked for time.
You don't have time for all those emails.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, no.
No?
No, uh, the conversation began when you asked me for an executive session. That's, that, that's not the appropriate place for, for that type of the conversation, and I explained Robert's rules to you. And then, then you asked to, to have fifteen minutes of open.
We've got some other board members that would like to speak.
Sure, I just.
I apologize.
I just don't like to be mischaracterized.
Likewise, I'm very sorry to fellow board members, because I'm trying to understand.
I, I'm just gonna, just one moment. So I'm just going to make some assumptions, but I'm happy to be corrected. I think I'm hearing from Linda, she'd like an, uh. A moment to address the board. I think the board retreat, where we're learning about board process, is a great time for that. If there's someone else in the district, like for, as an example, you think you need face time with Andrew. I'm not a, a board officer, but I think it's been pretty normal for new board members to sit down with our administrators to meet them. And if that hasn't already happened, we should figure out how that can happen, and I don't think that that needs to happen. That doesn't need to be a, um, a group process.
No, and it's funny, because I think. That's, I think you very much characterized the actual conversation that is happening. Uh, there was time Nikki and Linda were invited to meet with Mike and Sal, uh, myself. Um, and then I agree that the board retreat was the appropriate place to do that.
It, Linda, is that, is that not what you're looking for?
That was what I asked, if there were to be an executive session either before or after this meeting. If I could have five minutes to.
Here's the thing about an executive session, it's really important to me, and I, I'm really, open meetings law is really important to me. If something can possibly happen in an open session, it needs to happen in an open session. And if what you have to share is about you and your board service, that should be an open session if it involves all of us. Executive session is not for that type of discussion.
That's correct.
Okay, so do you need an executive session?
I'm very happy to do that at the board retreat. The only thing is, that I'm saying is that. It was a very difficult time for me to try to understand. Or be referred to in terms of my not remembering things, uh, if it was an age thing, Fred.
There's no conversation or innu- innuation, in, in, intonation about that, no innuendo at all.
You know. I don't like to talk about my background, but one of the things I would say is. I have to listen carefully to what people say, and to read carefully what people say. And I am very willing to take this right off now and go to the retreat. As long as you would acknowledge, please, to me, that the, and Mary Ann, you saw the same email. That the email you sent to me might have been, and one of my favorite sayings is beware of the unverified assumption. But. That email appeared to me. To be a bit condescending, a lot condescending.
Well, I think, I think part of that is just understanding how we communicate. Um, and I think that over the board retreat, we are going to understand each other and get to know each other's personalities a lot better. How we've had to do that over the last year, um, when we were going through the process last year, there was a lot of different personalities. It took a little time to understand how people communicate, what their thought processes are, and so, you know, there's no. Um, there's no condescension, there's no ill will, it's just the way some people talk, and then I think that board retreat's going to be fantastic. For figuring out our different language styles, different approaches, and, and sometimes, you know, if there is a situation where you feel. Or anyone feels that they're, you know, microaggressions or anything like that, we'll figure out as we're going how to manage that. Uh, but as a rule in the board, and especially during, you know, these meetings, we're all trying to be collaborative and then try to figure out. How to work through these problems and keep the district business in focus and just keep going.
I think that is, I think that is, what you're saying, I have no disagreement. Perhaps I was taking that as much as I was, because Fred and I have known each other for twenty years. And.
Uh, so, so, I mean, I will apologize if you read any condescension into that. I've worked with this board for two years now, I don't think that anybody here has ever felt. That I've been condescending. Um, and if I have, I do.
Some of the things I say to you.
At open door, uh, based on, on, on age, I, I, I probably, I think I value wisdom, um, and experience i- in. All aspects of my life. Um, and we did know each other twenty-three years ago, I did work for you. Um, we've both grown and changed over the twenty years that we didn't talk. Um, probably in different ways. So, we have known each other. I don't, I'm, I'm looking forward to getting to know you again. Um, because I've changed, and I'm sure you have as well. But uh, but again, I, I, I meant no, I, I was, I was really careful, I'm usually really careful, and, you know, about. How I phrase things, I never want anyone to feel. That I, I, you know, I just try and really be empathic and understanding with people, and um, and maybe. Yeah, I'm not sure how to.
Well, first of all, I will accept your apology. Uh, if anyone would like to see that last email. If you'd like to forward it, you sent it on the, the board.
For sure.
If anyone would like to see it, if you'd like to forward it to them, that would be.
I think I'd rather just move on, and we'll just work on relationships at the, um.
I, I gotta say, actually, this whole interaction, I'm uncomfortable with it in a board meeting.
I am a little also.
So, maybe, whatever, whatever discussion was just happening here, we as a board need to work out how to have that in a different way. Or a different place or time during our board retreat, because I, I, I don't want to serve on a board like that.
No, me either.
Nor do I, and I, it's an honor for me to be here. It was an honor to be elected to the board. I thank the highly of all of you, and I would say, I said what I needed to say. Um, there was no other way to do that for me, and I think we should get back to the business of providing the best possible education. For the children of this district. That's why I ran for the board, and it's why I'm here, and it's why I remain here. So thank you very much, Fred, and if I misunderstood you.
I, I think I told you in an email that, or actually in a phone conversation, that I never meant, I never mean any condescension.
I, I would stop now.
Oh. So.
Are, are we?
That's not exchange.
Can I, can I?
But we'll talk about this retreat.
To move into superintendent reports?
Absolutely.
Yes, but what about the retreat? So, August seventh, Wednesday the seventh, everyone is available for that. Well, I'll reach out to Nisba and get that set up.
Was that one of their available dates, Debbie?
We're going to try, yes, this is new information to Debbie. Um, five thirty, did we say five thirty? Was originally five thirty.
They're coming in person? Someone's coming in?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they have a, um, Jenny.
So are you gonna, okay, that date tomorrow, and?
I'll do, yes, pass the batons.
I see, see Mary Ann on the last email, so that we can pass the baton.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so we're trying for August seventh.
I'll bring a cake.
Okay. And we're, we're going to move on to the superintendent's reports.
All right, so, welcome everyone, um, appreciate Andrew's family coming tonight. Uh, welcome to the Chatham community, really excited to have Andrew here, I, uh. So I, I met with Andrew a few times, um, we met with Sal before for transitioning over all the things that need to be done, the to-do list. And uh, and then we met last week, we had dinner outside of my house, and we have a couple hours, I'm trying to go through the things that are really important to get done, so. Appreciate Andrew taking the time, whenever I need to call or email, or been talking frequently, so. Really excited, he's going to be a great fit for this, uh, this district, like I said, working with you. I, um, first off, I, I do want to thank too, personally, I want to thank the Chatham community for all the wonderful support and kind words on my interim superintendent appointment. I know it's, it's going to be a couple of months maybe, but I had a lot of people reach out on Facebook and texts and calls, and uh. Truly appreciate living and working in such a great place, so. That was very nice graduation, as Meryl said, it was awesome, um. Wednesday, June twenty-sixth, I did have a few parents ask why I was inside, so I told them the protocols, we do wait till the last day, the day before, we could even maybe do something in the morning. But we have to change things outside. I asked John, what did he want to do? He's, he's the last one, so. We decided in the afternoon, since the, the main thing is having seats for every single person that was key, we didn't have to turn any family members away, so we did go inside. Um, that worked out very well. Um, I always loved the event, uh, it was great to see our new superintendent Andrew attending, and also Miles, our principal, I thought that was great, show support for our school. Bell Victorian Jenna, Pellebeckus, and Solutory, Elena Graziano, they gave wonderful, wonderful speeches. Fred, also you did a great job, appreciate that. And then it was a little moving, because we had, uh, Sal De Angel after seven years, this was his last farewell. Um, you know, that, you know, that was a moving speech, and then John Thorson, I think it was, whatever, thirty years of the district, uh. It's kind of nice, they give golf balls this year, a little better than my son's classic game of combs. He can use those also. Um, but I do want to personally thank Sal De Angelo, I worked with him the last week up to the last hour, and all his support, um. And he sent me a nice gift when I started Monday. I'm this wonderful person to work with, really cared about the community, attended a lot of events, built a positive culture. And then John Thorson, you know, I've known him my twelve years here. He knows every single kid, which is awesome, you know, you can see it on the stage. Last year, my whole family came to my sons, and they just said that Principal's amazing, you know, the relationships he's built forever, and, and the community, and he was a great source, so. Know John's got a little more time, but I want to thank him for, for his service here. And we did a hundred percent graduation, so that was pretty cool. As I stated, I met with, uh, I met with Andrew, so that one of the big things that's on the agenda is we, and I sent this to the board. We have the old job description title, administrative educational services, and if you did compare, and we talked about a few things that you wanted to take out, so Andrew really took the beat on this. And we went over, the director of innovation critical assessment will be the new title, uh, so per law, our top two lawyers, we gotta. abolish the one position and create the other, pretty much a very similar position, but it's enhanced, like we said, and um. You know, one of the big things, uh, Andrew did is he really fleshed out the descriptions, if you compare the two. Really to make it forward, you know, what we're going through now with education, with kids, and the changes, and innovation is one of the, you know, obviously the key word, but. Really, and I saw, you know, in other words, like building trust with all the stakeholders. Um, there was quite a bit of difference between overseeing, you know, the old, the old description said oversee this, oversee that, he really, uh, fleshed that out. So that is on the agenda for, uh, adoption, so the plan is. we adopt that tonight, we will get that out to the, um, Sanes, which is kind of the principal administrators, uh, organization. Nisk is the superintendents and we use OLS. We're gonna hit everything, we're gonna try to get the best, you know, qualified candidate to build up our, our final piece of our team at this district, so we're excited about that. It'll begin for thirty days and Andrew and I will go through the, the resumes and set up interviews, we are gonna have a committee, I'm gonna reach out to Mark Congreg. Like to have a teacher in each building, we have the principals, myself, Andrew, you know, maybe one or two other people, but really go through a great process and transparent process for that. Um, one other piece we did discuss, uh, the grants, so since, uh, Dr. Who resigned and then Kate Gerard left in April.
That was great, you know, it was about Kate.
Yeah, so some of the work wasn't, so I told Andrew, can I reach out to Kate, we'll, we'll hire her as a consultant and I begged her to come on board and she's, she's so awesome that she said she would help. So, she's gonna help write the grants with, uh, Kate Julien's gonna help too.
That was great.
We gotta close out last year's, you know, some of the federal grants and then we're gonna, she's gonna help write, so I'm very excited, I'm actually gonna get her access to everything, work with her through this process. Uh, the other last really thing I have is the capital project, um, as I stated in the board report. Roofing is, is, is great, the weather's been great, they're really moving along, um. And Andrew Davies here, I want to thank Andrew Davies and his team, they've done a great job kind of helping out with things. As one of the big curveballs we had Tuesday, as I was brought in. I know Sal told everyone and the teachers we weren't doing the intro rooms while they changed their mind, they really want to get that done. So, they guaranteed that they can get the work done, so I said, all right, and, uh, so we had to move everything out of those rooms, so Andrew's team did a great job, um, we reached out to the principal or the teachers. Cause you know, they wanted to know what was going on and we told them we weren't gonna do anything, so John Thorson really called them. Couple reached back to me and I promised them, we'll take your stuff off and it'll save everything, you know. And then we stored correctly, get it put in, so. Uh, Andrew's crew did a lot of work and then we did have to hire some movers for, I think, four hours today to really move everything out of there, because we're starting demolition tomorrow, so. We're really moving along on that project, which is great, but I'm so excited, and then Mike's here, he's gonna order, uh, I mean, all the technology they want, we're gonna put in those rooms, since we're doing new rooms and, you know, it's gonna be a great addition, so. That, and then I think the bathrooms will start soon, you know, I'll keep progress, you know, giving you updates on it. So, that's really all I had on my superintendent.
Mike, one, um, one thing I forgot when we were doing this capital project. Those risers that live way down the hall and the bar, are they still living there?
That's a good question.
Andrew, you know.
We keep them on the stage unless there's an event. We, we keep the risers on the stage unless there's an event, and then we move them off the stage, which is what I mean, the gym, if the gym's not in use.
You know, the ones I'm talking about, the ones that, the ones that we use at graduation, it's outside, and, and where do you keep them?
We keep them on the stage unless there's an event, and then we usually move them to like the gym, if the gym's not in use or he puts them somewhere else. If, if the stage isn't used.
All right. I've had my eyes on those for a couple of years, I, it's such a crazy place to have them, but we'll see. Oh, is that little, that little, um, house that the kids built in the back, is that gone or is it still there?
The lawn house?
Huh?
The lawn house?
No.
I don't, I don't, Andy, you know if it's still there or not?
I think it still is there, I think, I think they're removed.
Yeah, I think it is still there, but.
And we can't keep that for storage, can we?
No, he did, he builds them for like either community member or teachers.
I know.
And, and he moves them and delivers them.
Maybe.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, I think I know that we need building permits and stuff.
Yeah, it is a little different than what they.
Yeah, okay.
Just looking for storage. My son actually participated in building that. We've been watching the progress closely too.
Uh, I have a question for, for Mike, actually, I, I'm sorry, when's the thirty-eight period opening close on that, on the, uh, the, uh, academic?
No, so we would like to post, if we approve tonight, we'll post tomorrow, tell those sources for thirty days.
Okay.
And then, and then I will be giving a banner to go over the, the applications.
I really like the changes. The description for each position and the title. Enjoy reading.
Yes, Andy did a great job with that.
Now, I, um, I'm gonna say, I, I think the use of the word innovation. It, it really is your first public statement as superintendent. And I think it is so powerful and really, really leading. You're telling our staff and our community exactly where your head is at. Um, and in, in the interviews, hearing you talk about the Blue Ribbon Commission changes to graduation, your knowledge about what's coming um, or what we expect to be coming, and your ability to, to make that so actionable so quickly. Real testimony to, um, to the leadership we expect.
The goal of that position is to help lead, you know, with, under, with cooperation, of course, with me as well. You know, it's gonna be, uh, I see that position of really being a collaborative position with many people, but instruction is such an important part of what I believe in, um, and there's a lot of changes coming to New York State education. So, I think between both of us, we can really, um, make that, you know, happen here, Chad.
Yeah, just that, just the change in the, I mean, that, I've, I've read some of the other job descriptions as well, but just the change of the title, I think is really, it's, it's a very smart thing.
I appreciate that, I'm looking forward to it.
Okay, everybody. Any more comments? So, now we are moving on to new business. The motion for the appointment of superintendent of schools and accept memorandum of appointment and agreement for Mr. Andrew Court. Whereas the Board of Education has conducted a thorough search process to select a new superintendent of schools. And whereas, after careful consideration and consultation, has determined that Andrew Court possesses the necessary qualifications and experience to serve as the Chatham Central School District Superintendent of Schools and to continue the orderly administration of the district's programs and projects. And whereas, Mr. Court has agreed to accept the board's offer of appointment for a four-year term to serve as the superintendent effective on October eighth, twenty twenty-four. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby appoints Andrew Court as the superintendent of schools of the Chatham Central School District for an initial term of four years commencing October eighth, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight, at an initial annual-based salary, am I supposed to say that? Is it, okay, of a hundred and, yes, I'm just so used to private, okay, a hundred and ninety thousand. And hereby ratifies and adopts a written contract and employment containing all of the relevant and applicable benefits, terms and conditions of employment for the superintendent. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education authorizes the president of the board or the vice president, his or her absence to execute said agreement on behalf of the district and to file same with the district's. And I have a motion.
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Some questions? All right, it's, uh, any questions in, um, any?
I guess it's in those.
What's it?
Yes, it's in those.
All right, so, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any votes?
Question to the first.
Yes, that's the question, so, you opposed? Okay, so.
Here you wanna do this.
Hey, I believe me, but maybe by in six months, I'll get it down.
It took me months.
Okay.
That kept reminding me to ask.
Remember the questions, it's the all.
Um, can I ask you a question and I, 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 I really hope I'm not blowing something up, but you just said September.
So, it says, so, I wish I could tell you an exact date.
Okay.
So, I, I, I can give you a little update of, of where they are in Lebanon, so, um, they are in the process of interviewing interim candidates. Um, and they should, they're calling the interim candidates, I believe, on Thursday. And the goal is, um, that they're gonna do interviews and if, if that person can start in August or end of August, they will release me as soon as they can, that, that the board made that promise to me that they're going to try to either release me by September first.
So, then, then I, I'd like to, with, with the complete understanding of the variables involved. I would like to extend in advance sincere gratitude to the New Lebanon Board of Education. Just for considering this, they did not have to, the fact that they are seeing this as a clear pathway for both institutions to put education first is a testimony to the quality of their members.
They, they, they truly, you know, they came to me about that, they said, I know you wanted it, you know, they've been incredibly supportive, I they're an amazing.
It sounds like they must be, really.
And they, um, they said that they would like to have someone start September first and they know that Chatham would as well, so they're doing everything in their power to, to make that happen.
Yeah, I, I love that about them, um, I don't know your members, but, um, but please, uh, you know, as, as a member of the board, um, extend, that, that's at least my appreciation, maybe the officers will, will, will make it safe.
They have, they have interviews scheduled for the eighteenth of July, so hopefully by then they'll know if they have someone in place, then whenever that person can start. But I appreciate that, do you mind if I just say a couple things, please?
Andrew, before you do, could I just say, could I answer that, that, uh, I've received four phone calls so far from either administrators or from residents of the New Lebanon district, and they are trying to be gracious about it, but they don't want you to go. And another thing I would tell you is that I'm a much nicer person than you might think.
Oh, please, you. Linda, you don't have to worry about that, yeah, no, I, I truly have had an amazing experience in New Lebanon and it's been, it's been really bittersweet saying goodbye to everyone. Um, but I'm incredibly excited.
There we go.
Thanks, Eli.
He's always watching. So, um, so as I was saying, I, I have been incredibly blessed, uh, with a, an amazing ten years in New Lebanon. Um, it's been bittersweet saying goodbye to everyone because it's summer, so most of our teachers and our students and our parents, um, you know, are, are at summer. But I, but I have to say, I am incredibly honored and thrilled and excited and any other word I can think of to be your next superintendent. Um, I want to thank the Board of Education for, for choosing me. Um, I want to thank, um, Mike Chuddy for taking on the interim superintendent, he's been fantastic to work with and I truly look forward to working with you, Mike. Uh, and I look forward to working with each and every one of you. You know, I know, uh, last year in, in my past district, we had three new board members. And it takes time to really get to know each other a, as a board member, and that, that retreat is incredibly important. And I just want to, to let you know that, you know, when you have so many new board members and you're trying to get to know each other, you may want to do another retreat. And you could do treat, retreats throughout the entire year if needed. Um, and that's something that I, I take. It is incredibly important to me to help build that board relations, not only, you know, with you as board members, but also with me as a superintendent. Um, and it's incredibly important to really make sure that we're following those goals and making sure that every single thing that we do as a board, as a community, as a district, meets those goals and is, is working towards those goals. So, I, I truly, um, it's a great opportunity, there's a lot of change going on in Chatham. And that was one reason why I applied for this position, because I'm excited about that opportunity of change and working with new stakeholders and really, um, taking the district to the next level. Couple of my goals, I want our families and our students to love coming and being students and being family members of the Chatham. I want all of our faculty and staff and administrators to want to work in Chatham. I want, I want to, to build that reputation and this is a place where people want to work. And I want to make sure that it's a, it's a place that the community loves and we have that reputation of, of the very best. So, I look forward to working with each and every one of you to make the, that all, that all come true, and I thank you for this opportunity and I can't wait to get started. So, thank you all.
Thank you.
Andrew. Better wait after tomorrow.
Okay. Yes, thank you very much, Andrew, appreciate that and we love hearing that. Okay, so we're gonna move on to the next one, the motion to approve summer curriculum product, uh, projects, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Any questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, next note. Do we have to go through each and every one of these because they're not in the census?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Okay, so next, number three, authorize the superintendent to approve change orders on capital project.
Motion.
Any questions?
Uh, one comment.
Okay.
Uh, usually it's standard operating in, in the board to read just enough of the resolution so everyone knows what we're talking about.
Okay.
Um, some of these are really long.
Yes, so just a little bit of it.
Well, if anyone listening wants to go find the resolution, enough for them to go find it.
But we had this in front of us, we had this for, you know, we don't have to read this whole thing, you're not suggesting we read this whole thing.
No, no, but she, she read a couple of the long ones.
Okay, yes, yes, thank you. Okay, so where are we at, uh, motion, motion, motion?
I made a motion.
Okay, any questions?
Are we on resolution nine, right?
We're on. Number three.
Yes, okay.
The change order or something. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, yes, okay. Page. Four, okay, down here. Next is the motion to approve the agreement with Atlanta Testing Laboratories. We have a motion. Motion.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Okay, the next one, motion to appoint Kate Gerard as grant writer as needed.
Motion.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next, um, business meeting consensus agenda. So, motion to accept the consensus agenda of the business.
Uh, number six, creating new position.
Oh, that's on here, it wasn't on my printout, okay.
Resolution twelve.
I must have printed this out.
Really?
Too early, yes, okay. The motion to create new position, be it resolved, the Board of Education create the position of one full-time director of innovation, curriculum and assessment and abolishes the position of administrator of educational services effective July ninth, twenty twenty-four, we have a motion.
Motion. Second.
Your second, Fred?
I did.
Any questions?
Just a very short question, and I think Andrew could, could answer this for me or, um. In terms of this new job, there's a, a, a bit of a change in the responsibilities for five oh four plans. And, um, just wondering in terms of that, uh, the responsibility for the oversight with the junior director and the responsibility for formulating the plans would be?
So, so that's something that Mike and I talked a lot about, of how we want to do that in the future. So, the position currently, um, the past position had that five oh four chair. Um, so, so typically, that is what the position was. And I don't know enough about the other positions to really get a good grasp on who else could do that work, and that's what I want to do. But I do want to explore maybe looking at other avenues, if, if having other leaders take over that five oh four. Because in my eye, the five oh four piece doesn't really fit the current position that we're looking at. But for now, until I can get a good handle on all the different duties and the responsibilities of our whole administrator team, I wanted to keep it at that for now until I learn more about the.
Yeah, makes really sense.
Yeah, but it, but if you look at the job, re, job description, it kind of doesn't fit in there, you know, Mike and I went back and forth on it. But I want more information before I make that change. So, more, more, more details to come on that coming up.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Oh, all in favor? Any opposed? The next, I'm just confused, it says right here. I see that, but it says it was already.
Oh, that, I just think that there's two consensus agendas, uh, I think you hit thirteen and three or something.
So, I'll just ignore that.
Well, actually, I have to tell you, on the agenda, something, something is messed up, because when I go to click on it, I can't see, see the name, so there's something that's not.
Okay, okay, so just ignore that, okay, all right, that's fine, I'm just gonna go ahead and do that.
I think it's just they actually.
Okay, so the business meeting consensus agenda, motion to accept the consensus agenda of the business meeting R through T. We have a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second. I have a question and I should have talked this much earlier when you were asking for, um, Sam on the agenda, but, um, I presume no second public comment and no items for future agenda because this is a funny meeting. Um, usually we set the board calendar during this meeting and I don't see that.
It wasn't, it's a, it's a.
Where, where is it?
It's eight, I mean, I'm five hundred and that was under K, organizational meeting consensus on the business finance.
K, what number?
K thirty-three.
Oh, okay, I just didn't see if it's a name.
All right. Great. And we're, we're ticking at six, right? Is everyone happy with that? Six, six o'clock for the meetings.
Oh, six, oh, yes, oh, yeah, yeah.
The one thing I'm gonna.
No, 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 six, six o'clock.
That'd be lovely.
We discuss it every year, we usually end up on six, but.
The, the one thing I can say is, um, that, that the schedule for, I have, I have seven fourteen course. The fall, I have no idea what the schedule is, they haven't announced it, so, I'm, I may, I may be coming to, to be all again.
Okay. So there's gonna be six o'clock. We're gonna go with, we're gonna go with six o'clock.
I like it.
Unless we needed to make a change, but, uh, but yeah, six o'clock. Okay, so where are we?
Do we have a second one, or should I dawn into first?
Uh, Nikki.
Nikki.
Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Thirteen. Now we're at the adjournment, so.
We do, we all in favor on that?
Yes.
We did, I thought this was.
Oh, good, I'm not the only one, Les. Okay, uh, so may I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, everybody, thank you for putting out with me, novice.
You did great. Grab, grab some cookies.